We're gonna go ahead and start our meeting. We're gonna ask Councilwoman Ms. Harris to give us our prayers. It's gonna be followed by Councilman Kroom and our pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please stand?
Lord, we coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just wanna thank you, Lord, for another day. Lord, this is a national prayer day. Everybody in West Memphis and all around should be praying. Cause Lord, we need the peace. We need your love. We need your will, oh God. Lord, we lift you up in this meeting right now. Let your presence be made known and hear God. Fill it with your presence, oh God. Cover us with your blood. Lift us with your love. Let your mercy abide around here, through here, and over here, oh God. Continue to give us that love run from heart to heart and breast to breast, oh God. Lord, were we too high? Bring us down. Were we too low? Bring us up, oh God. Keep us, oh God, in your will, oh God, that we may honor you, oh God, in all things that we do. Keep our mind, keep our mouth, Lord. Let us know what we going wrong, oh God. Keep us in your steps, oh God, as we follow your path, oh God. Give us a clean heart. Renew us, God, with the right spirit, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor as we lift you up in the city of West Memphis, oh God, in our community, oh God. Continue to bless, oh God. Continue to encourage the leaders, oh God, in the name of Jesus. And I thank you right now for all that you doing, all that you going to do, oh God. I lift you up, oh God, because I don't know no other way. And I thank you right now, God, for where you brought us from, what you brought us through, and where you gonna take us to. We give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor, and we give you praise, cause it's in your name, oh God, that we live and move and have our being. And we thank you, oh God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen and praise God.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with every intention of the law. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're gonna ask Ms. the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Charlie Suter Jr. Counselor Bruce.
Here.
Counselor Kat.
Here.
Counselor Kroom.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Muhammad.
Present.
Counselor Monday. Counselor Murray. Counselor Willis.
We have nine out of ten present. I haven't wanted to hear anymore on Councilman Willis. We'll definitely keep him in our prayers. Were there any corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Second.
All pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. The minutes I carry. We had no old business. Ms. Muhammad, would you do a minute on R1, R2, and O1?
Yes, sir, mayor. Thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion that R1, R2, and O1 be read by title only.
Is it second?
Second.
All pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. It passes. City Attorney?
R1 is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to donate a part of Lot 12 of the Taylor-Hemant Way property located in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 6, Township 6 North, Range 9 East, Pritton County, Arkansas, to the Arkansas State Highway Commission, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the warranty deed donation.
Hearing that, Ray, can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved. Second.
It's in a discussion. Bob came up and explained it. All pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. It passes.
Were you getting a resolution number?
That will be... That will be Resolution 2320.
That number is 2320. Also, R2, City Attorney?
R2 is a resolution authorizing and approving execution of an equipment lease purchase agreement with Cadence Equipment Finance, a division of Cadence Bank.
Also, can I get a motion and second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Was there any discussion on that?
Mayor, I think they wanted a roll call vote on the Cadence resolution.
Okay. Alright, we got a motion and second. There was no discussion. It was explained a little earlier what it was. Detroit, the public works had been working with the sanitation department about renting. So, will you call that roll?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bruce.
Yes.
Counselor Kat.
Yes.
Counselor Kroom.
Yes.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Holt.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Muhammad.
Yes.
Counselor Monday.
Yes.
Counselor Murray.
Yes.
Counselor Willis. Nine out of ten.
We hear it. We got nine votes. It does pass. Will you get that resolution number as well?
Yes, sir. That will be Resolution Number 2321.
That number is 2321. And move down to O1?
O1 is an ordinance to authorize members of the city council to purchase services from Josh Stokes, DBA, Fish Daddies, and for other purposes.
Hearing that, Ray, can I get a motion and second to approve that as well?
So moved.
Second. Also, that was backdated with the new...
Backed, retroactive to November the first of 2024.
Okay. Can I get a motion and second?
So moved.
You get a second? All pay by. Oppose. Alright, will you get that ordinance? No, 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 no. I want suspended rules placed on the second reading. Can I get a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
All pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. It's on the second reading.
Second reading of an ordinance to authorize members of the city council to purchase services from Josh Stokes, DBA, Fish Daddies, and for other purposes.
Alright, I'm gonna ask, can I get a motion and second to further suspend these rules and place on the third reading? Yeah, motion and second? All pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. Alright, City Attorney?
Third reading of an ordinance to authorize members of the city council to purchase services from Josh Stokes, DBA, Fish Daddies, and for other purposes.
Alright, it's been ready for the third and final time. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. It passed. Will you get the ordinance number?
Yes, sir. That ordinance number will be 2700.
2700, okay. We didn't have permission request on our agenda, but I'm gonna ask, can I get a motion and second to add the charity days to our agenda?
So moved.
Second. All pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. Is added. Councilwoman Hutchinson?
Yes, sir. I want to ask to give 500 of my money to Academy of West Memphis. Prom Promise.
We got 500 to Academy of West Memphis.
And then I have one more. I want to give 250 to Brad Elementary.
Alright, 500 to Academy of West Memphis and 250 to Brad Elementary. Does that complete you?
For my... Yeah, I think that I might have a little change up over. That's it.
Word.
That work is true. Thank you, thank you.
Were there anyone else that wanted to add?
I think I'd like to give $500 to the Academy of West Memphis Prom Promise.
Ms. Muhammad gave 500 to the Academy of West Memphis for the Prom Promise as well. Were there anyone else? Or did you want to do anything else?
Not yet.
Alright, we're hearing. Okay, good. Quick correction. On the ordinance number, it's 2701 instead of 2700. 2701. So change that zero to a one. Alright, we hear Councilwoman Hutchinson give 500 to the Academy of West Memphis, 250 to Brad. Councilwoman Muhammad gave 250 to the... I'm sorry, 500. 500 to the Academy of West Memphis. Both going toward their Prom Promise. No one wanted to give? Can I get a motion and second to approve these?
So moved.
Second.
All pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. Those are approved. Alright, we're gonna move down to committee reports. We're gonna ask Ms. White, will you come forward and give your report on the Chamber of Commerce, please? How you doing?
I'm well, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor McClendon and Councilwomen and Councilmen. My name is Stephanie White. I am the Executive Director for the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce. And in my report, as far as the chamber, we are growing. We had a ribbon cutting today, and we had one this past Saturday. We are growing by leaps and bounds, and I'm glad to be able to share that. I know that with the businesses that have been coming to West Memphis, that the mayor has been helping to spearhead or spearheading, that that has gotten us a lot of traffic with that, and people are more interested. As we are moving forward for this month, moving to May, we are getting ready to start our leadership class, which will be in August. It will start then. We also will be having our lunch and learns in order to be able to provide more awareness to our businesses on an educational level as far as different programs that can be helpful to those, one of which is looking at the tariffs and how those will affect small businesses as well as large businesses. Additionally, we are going to be continuing to raise funds, because we do appreciate the people who support us, but we also want to make sure that we are generating funds on our own as well. And with that, we are currently at 485 members for the chamber, and we're looking to be able to not just continue to collect people, but to be able to promote them. We don't want people to think that we're only interested in the larger businesses. We're interested in all of our businesses. But some of our smaller ones, we're trying to reach out to so that we can make sure we get their name out there, because we want to make sure that we're not just getting people who are coming from our side of the bridge over to the other side. We want to start bringing folks over to this side by sharing with people what we do have to offer and making sure that we are acting as a hub of information where people can find out about businesses and services that West Memphis provides. Any questions? And if you do have any events, or you know anyone who has any events, please be sure to ask them to share those with us, because we do want to be able to promote those with our social media sites as well as newsletter and any videos that we can create.
I know the annual banquet was excess. What is your next scheduled event?
The next scheduled event will be...
The Women in Business.
We did Women in Business. That was April the 25th. We just had that one. And we had a lot of people who came out and supported in the rain, so we were very happy to see those folks, and we were glad that the rain stopped. So we'll get a final count on what we raised from that once our, our final numbers are in. As far as the next event that's going to be coming up, we are going to be spending a lot of time really focusing on these lunch and learns so that we can make sure that we're providing information, because we are supposed to make sure that they have, we have programming to offer to our businesses. If nothing else, thank you all so very much. I appreciate... Oh, I do have one thing I did want to say. We are very thankful to our mayor who helped to orchestrate our facelift to the chamber. So if you have not driven by, please make sure that you come and see. We will be having an open house. We just haven't set a date yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. We're gonna move forward to A and P. Jim Jackson?
I do understand that Mr. Murray gave a report last week, so I'm not gonna bore you. You actually have the minutes, official minutes from the April 16th meeting in front of you. I don't know for sure what you went over, but we did have the financial report. We're a little down from this time last year, 4%. We talked about some excess revenues that we have and investing those. And we have a financial professional on our commission, Mr. Kirby Carlson, who's CEO of Fidelity. And he made some suggestions that the commission accepted and wanted to move forward with them, some of the ways we will invest some of our revenue. And had a couple of funding requests from TCP Entertainment for Memorial Day, Backyard Blues, and Soul Fest. Gonna help those out with sponsorship of that event. And also helped out, going to help out with the Memphis Street Rod Delta River Cruisin' that'll be held out at Southland in September. This will be about their fourth year, and they bring three, four, 500 cars in from all over. It's a great event. If you haven't noticed, Civic Center, I guess it looks like progress, even though it doesn't look like progress. Looks like a bomb went off. But the front of the whole building, the whole front of the building is gone, but it's all part of the plan. So give us a few months, and I think it'll be something that we can be proud of. Gonna move, kinda have Blues off Broadway starting tonight. Gonna be at High Tower Park at the amphitheater. Weather's gonna cooperate with us, looks like. And that's about it. If y'all got them in front of you, if you've got any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
They don't have nowhere to go in if it rain, don't do they?
Ma'am.
I said they don't have any place to go if it raining.
If it raining, well, we're gonna go to the auditorium, but I think we're gonna be good enough.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Jackson, we're gonna go to Main Street?
I wanna be real quick, counsel. I just wanna promote our upcoming Food Truck Festival at the Broadway Food Truck Park. It is May 17th, and we just got our T-shirts in today.
You got us long?
If you see me after, we can work something out. I do know the mayor's size, so that's why I was able to grab one, but that's gonna be...
Thank you.
That's gonna be May 17th, and we've got over a dozen food trucks. And the way that's gonna work is each food truck has to offer a $5 special of the day, special menu item, and that's so that people can afford to sample multiple food trucks. We're gonna have two bands, Mr. Lamar and the Get Up Band, and then the Infinity Band as well. It's free to attend, and we'll have some giveaways and vendors as well. But I've just got a little flyer to hand out, and that's really all I wanted to say.
Also, Raymond, we got, we got two games that we got in there, and they call Cornhole. And I've been hearing one councilman think that he pretty good at throwing the cornhole, so his name treats a kid, but I'm just gonna leave it right there. So I meet him out there one day. Look forward to it. And it ain't no small. Also, we're gonna go back to our budget. Budget. Did you want to go?
Yeah, we briefly talked about this in pre-council. Four of the council members were able to attend the meeting last week. I'd like for everybody to be there. So I'd like to have a meeting maybe Tuesday of this coming week. Definitely might want to consider having a department head to come in to address some of the issues that we, that transpired through 2024 that with the new system probably will not reoccur. But I still think there needs to be some modifications to the process. And just want to make sure everybody's kept very well informed. So maybe 1 o'clock on Tuesday, if it'd be possible, or... But, you know, we'll send something out. Please let me know everybody's schedule.
I know this is totally out of God, but you know, our key is future means a lot to me, and I see Dr. Wolf back there. Did you just wanna update what the school's doing to the council, or if you even got anything going on right now? This is one of our school commissioners.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kim Wolf. Thank you, mayor. So, well, there's always lots going on with the West Memphis School District, so I was pleasantly surprised to hear two of you donate some of your budget to Prom Promise. I thank you all for that. So we, as far as the school board members, and I'm sure that would be extended to council members as well, and you, mayor, they're having an open house from 5:45, I think, until 6:45 tomorrow. If you all want to come and see how the cafeteria has been transformed in years past, it's been absolutely amazing. You would not believe the work that goes into making sure our students have an amazing experience. And so that's something that's happening. Of course, graduation is coming up, and don't ask me the date, but it's in a few weeks. And we'll make sure that that's shared as well, so we hope that you all will come out and support our seniors as they walk across the stage. Earlier this week, we had a celebration in honor of our seniors who are going into the military, the Army National Guard, college, and/or the workforce. So that was, and we had athletic scholarships as well. So that was our first time having a combined celebration to honor all of those different ventures for our students. And we had, I think it was 66 who were recognized. And so I was happy to be there to be able to celebrate those students and their parents who were there with them as well. So that was really nice. And most of you know, we have a new superintendent, Mr. Eric Foister, who joined us on December 2nd of 2024. And so he's just been with us now about five months, and he's been doing an amazing job getting out into the community and getting to know all of our various stakeholders and parents. And so we just ask your full support and prayers. We talked about today being a national day of prayer. We certainly need that as far as a community and our school district. So as our students exit us, those seniors, and those who are just entering preschool, kindergarten, all the way through grade 12, pray for them, pray for their parents. There's so much that's involved in educating a child, as you all well know. And last but not least, pray for us as a school board. We'll have some transition taking place. We do have an election coming up, May 13th. So some are not seeking reelection, others are. So just pray that the Lord would lead the right individuals into our school district and our school board so that our students get those who are truly vested in their best interests and those who are here to support them in every way possible to make sure that they can maximize opportunities, whether they stay here locally, or if they go abroad, or wherever the Lord sends them. So thank you, mayor. I was not anticipating this, but gotta get up when you call.
Thank you. Also, sorta on the police department, actually, they had a Narcarde truck was wrecked. The insurance gave them $21,000. They wanna get another truck. It caused around 40, 42,000. So they got 21,000 from the insurance check, and they wanna take 22,000 out of their Narcarde seizure fund. They already have the money, but I just wanted to bring for the council to get a motion and second to a vote on it, to approve them to do it.
We need to have motion added to the agenda.
Yeah, let me make a... Wait, can I get a motion and second to add it to the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All pay by. Oppose. Is added. Now can I get a motion and second to purchase?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion? All pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, it's done. Alright. Also, I had another thing that I wanted to ask, and I don't know if this is the time. You all know that our security here at the City Hall, Lynn, is really, it's a major thing going on. And I'm hoping that he do return, but you know, keep him in your prayers if he may cannot return. And I want you all to consider moving his budget into the mayor's budget. It's not more money just transferring his salary that comes out the police department to the City Hall budget. So we can make sure that we can have someone, because I'm learning with certain means like this, it's fine. But I think we need to rehouse or real security City Hall, because I know we had one incident with some guys from Maine or someone just walked in, walking in meetings and everything, and they were hoping that someone would throw them out, because that's how they get Facebook cred and stuff like that. Then you run into a lot of fools. That's the best plan, and you ain't got no one up here to do no security on them. And I definitely need to have someone here that's gonna definitely protect it. So not asking for no more money, just the Lynn budget is in the police, so that whatever he's making. And it ain't gotta be the day. We'll give it to her, find out what that, what those dollars are, and you all consider moving them up to my budget so we can make sure that we get someone that we can hire if he's not able to come back full time.
In the event that he isn't able to come back, I hear you using the word "security." Are you speaking outside of the police department?
No, ma'am. No, I'm talking about someone. I'm talking about, I'm talking about, well, I mean...
Like a security company?
Someone that, no, not security company, you know, just, I mean, just if it's a former officer or something, something like that.
Right, that's what I mean. Are you talking about someone else? I know Lynn was a...
Yeah, was a police officer. However that went, you know, so. Then one of the best things of the day, I see, I see my girl who makes sure I eat when I'm hungry. I don't know, these women can cook some of the best chicken in the world, Kim. I see. Ms. Veronica Williams, will you come up and speak for the pack, what they are doing? They coming up to show their service, and that's a good thing. A lot of, in the hospitality industry, we need more people that wanna raise their service to the next level. So they fed everyone out there. You all ate the hot wings out there, so.
How everybody doing?
Hey, how you doing?
My name is Veronica Williams. I am the store leader at Dodgers on Broadway. I've been with the company for four years. I've been a store leader for only six years. So I'm out trying to market and promote my business. So we've been out going out to different locations, like business, giving back food, 'cause everybody complaining about our food being high. I'm sorry. So I go out and try to do like twice a month to go out to different businesses and feed everybody on their job. So I've been kinda, I'm not familiar with the area, because I'm from Mississippi. I stay in South Haven, Mississippi. But my shift leads, they stay over here. So we all out together trying to market, going to different businesses. I'm getting familiar with the places in different businesses, and so y'all probably see my face more often. And so I just wanna promote and let everybody know that we sell more than chicken. We do cash checks, gas, and we try to get our gas, stay our gas low, 'cause I know everybody like to get gas. So we try to keep it kinda low so everybody can come by. And we do, do cash checks. I know everybody probably get deposits or going to their bank account nowadays, but for the ones they do, we do cash checks. And all three of us know how to cash check. So, yeah, and another thing, if y'all doing anything, y'all doing something for like schools or any events, or you can let me know, or we can donate chicken or whatever it is that we need to do, we can be a big help.
Well, first off, before you introduce your crew, Councilman Kat is getting ready to put on a big budget meeting for next week, so. So you donate chicken, I mean.
Let me know. Just let me know the date and time, or you give a Kim, or Ken Yada, if y'all see them at the store. Just let me know. She have my business card, so you can call me and let me know, and we can make that happen.
He said a donation. How many people?
You just let me know how many people y'all have, and we can make...
Yeah. Who you got with you?
Thank you. And I give you a Berry's Club coffee card, will you give?
Veronica, who you got with you?
My shift lead, Ken Yada.
I know Yada.
She, she's the second shift lead, and Kim, she's the first shift lead.
'Cause every time I come in, Ken Yada said, drop him some fresh chicken.
Yeah, they told me. They said, drop the mail three pieces. I said, okay, go drop it. So, yeah.
I'd like to ask you a question. Why didn't you bring some of those corn dogs with you?
Next time, I know. You like corn dogs.
I've had quite a bit.
Got you. Got you. We got you.
Thank you, also.
Thank you. It's an honor. Thank you.
Also, we had no appointments, no presentations from the mayor. I do have a few announcements of the council. First off, I want to announce the Blue Devils' last day in Prom 25 pre-game event, which is gonna be Friday, May the 2nd, which is gonna be tomorrow, from 5:45 to 6:45. Drop in. Please RSVP to esberry@wmSD.net. That's gonna be tomorrow. So you all come on, and the door opens for the senior class at 7:00, 7:00 p.m., so want you all to come out and be a part of it. at seven, seven PM, so want you all to come out and be a part of it. What council meeting, council members, they want all of you there as well?
The school board, some of the school board and superintendents, you can't really take too long out, so y'all can't, please.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Definitely, also, uh, I wanna remind everybody, following this meeting at two-thirty, the fire department will be doing their ribbon cut for their new fire academy. It's gonna be at Station Two, correct? Station Two, so when they wanna come be a part, this is two-thirty today. So, I be looking for everyone to come out, the department heads as well, the city council members to come out and give them your support. Also, Blues Off Broadway tonight is at, uh, High Tower Park, correct? So, that's what's gonna-
You'd like Tina Turner, you need to come out.
Alright.
I'm not saying she's gonna be there.
Well, we, we, hey, if, if, if the real Tina there, I don't know if I wanna be there, but hey. But yeah, we'd love to see, uh, you all out this morning, yeah. So, uh, this Blues Off Broadway, as well, I want everyone to know, the auditors are in the house, so they are here doing their thing as well. Also, I ask you to all to keep two families in your prayers, if you all may know anyone that may have lost their family, uh, Mr. Tim White, who was over at West Memphis House on the door, the, uh, he passed, his family's gonna be there Saturday as well. Also, Mr. George Broadway, he passed as well, his family will be the same on the third as well. Then I'm gonna turn it over to Keep West Memphis Beautiful.
Alright, and, uh, I think Reverend Parker passed.
S.J. Parker.
Mister-
Wow, when?
This morning.
Last night.
Last night.
God. I was going to, uh, announce that.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, keep Parker family in your prayers. Reverend S.J. Parker was pastor here for forty-eight years, he touched a lot of lives in this city of West Memphis. Say what?
That's all, just forty-eight years?
Forty-eight.
I thought about sixty.
No, he was here for forty-eight, and, uh, uh, he played a big part in Willis Munn's life. And I'm telling you, I, I, he's, he's gonna be missed, dearly missed in this city. He was a real man, real man, I mean, I, I, I try to pattern myself after him, I, I love people, I try to do things like, he was just a, just, hey, it's, it's a hurting feeling, because he was like a father to me. Thank y'all.
And I also like for you all continue to pray for Charles Willis, continue and lift him up.
May I have something as well? Uh, I'd like to thank Chad at the department for the work that they're doing. We have, we, I've complained, meeting after meeting about the, uh, cars that are parked and the, people that have washers and dries in their yards and that type of thing. And it's, it's very important that we continue to, to work on this project, keep pushing. Broadway fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, you need to go better, it, it, it looks a lot better. And I also wanted to ask about some of the, uh, are we, we're gonna be cutting lawn this, this summer? I know it's-
Yeah, we, 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 we doing that currently.
Yeah. And they have some issues on-
And, and I'm so, I'm-
Avalon.
I'm so glad you said that, and I, I definitely cannot, before I, before I go to Ms., Councilwoman Muhammad, I know you're gonna do, talk about What's Beautiful. Chad Bowman done an outstanding job at our, um, town hall meeting, and his whole entire department has been doing well, the things that Ford has been doing in our city, and the, the amount of cars. One thing I just say is that the mindset of our people has to change. I mean, if they continue to keep doing what they doing, it's not something that they are not doing, it's the mindset of the peoples in that community. How can a man just come back in on a Monday and tow twenty-one cars? The week before that, he towed fifty-three cars. It's, that, that, that's not us not doing, we doing, that's the people don't give a damn about their community, I'm sorry to say it that way, but that's what it is. The people got to change their mentality. And when we have these community meetings, you have the whole council body in there, all the department heads, and they say this and say this on Facebook and do this. When it come down to be here, they don't even show up, but you claim you care about your community. Sometimes you just wanna be a hacker, sometimes, if you gonna be like that, I don't even feel that you even deserve an explanation. So, start getting involved, because we doing everything possible that we can, this council is doing everything they can, the department heads are doing everything they can, I just want you all to know that we, we hear you, and we gonna work with you, we gonna do everything we can, but the community, you all got to get involved, and you all gotta do better, ain't us, y'all gotta do better.
It's just like the old saying, it take a village to raise a child, it take a community to help the city.
Exactly.
Well, I said, thank you, truly appreciate it.
Ms. Muhammad, will you give us West Memphis, Keep West Memphis Beautiful?
Right, we've registered, um, Keep West Memphis Beautiful through the Arkansas and, uh, Keep America Beautiful program for May tenth, from eight until twelve. If you're interested in cleaning, I know Patricia, she's always there unless she really isn't able. We've had all city, we've had all city council members at one point in time, except maybe a few who always participated faithfully. Last year, we had over a hundred participants, we had a, a lot of high school children that were, junior high school children that were involved, this year, and reaching out to the high school coaches. One coach has already said he's gonna bring some of his players, uh, to help clean up, and this is what we're talking about, old heads, it may be kind of, uh, difficult to get them to change, because they are like an old stiff tree, when you try to chop it down, it's gonna be hard. But these little young ones that are tender and bendable, if we can just teach them the importance of pride in wherever they live, not just West Memphis, their homes or just whatever, then perhaps, over the course of time, our city is going to improve. It didn't take overnight for it to get like this, and it's going to take more than overnight for it to change, because when I first moved to West Memphis, it was nothing like this. You know, it, it wasn't deteriorated the way it is, but somewhere along the line, we dropped the ball, uh, somewhere, I don't know, and it just kept rolling and rolling and rolling, and more litter and debris just kept rolling on it.
Yeah.
So, if we start teaching our young kids, train them up while they are young, and when they're old, they won't depart from that way, because I make a perfect bed to this very day. Because when I was a little girl, I would make my bed in the morning, and my mother would look at it, and she says, stand back and look at it, is it right? No, ma'am. I'd go and do it again, stand back and look at it, is it right? No, ma'am. So, the third and final time she had me to stand back and look, I made it right, my, my bed is tight. And I don't like to leave my house without a made-up bed, that's for sure. I'm not saying everything else is in order, but that bed is made. So, when we train them the way they should go when they're older, they will not depart from that. So, this is the training time, and we're encouraging the schools and parents, we've had, had a lot of little children, last year, all mixture of, of children, white, black, all mixture, Hispanic, we had just a lot of children out last year, and they really, really enjoyed it. Is Kenneth out there? If you are, we're ready for those burgers to start getting ready. They enjoyed that too. So, we're asking everybody, and to me, numbers really doesn't bother me, we can have ten, we can have a hundred and ten, as long as we get the job done, Patricia knows, because one time there were just four of us, and we worked like there were four hundred of us, and we enjoyed every moment of it. It's just not cleaning up, it's a fellowship, people meeting neighbors, they didn't know we're their neighbors, because we're not neighborly the way we once were. We're hiding behind the fences and in our doors, watching our TVs and playing our games, and we really don't... I'm not saying everybody don't know our neighbors as we should. So, a lot of people, they've become aware of the fact that they are neighbors, maybe not just right next door, but within the same neighborhood. So, it, it, it's just a lot of things encompassed in this Keep West Memphis Beautiful. We've been doing this since twenty-twelve, and, uh, I think it was twenty-twelve when we first started. And we're asking you to just join in with us, we have t-shirts available, we'll have bags, gloves, whatever you may need, we're gonna have a paper grabbers, rakes, some places you'll have to have rakes, because it's, the litter is so dense, you'll have to have rakes to rake it up. So, we're asking, it's, that's on May tenth, from, uh, eight, registration starts at eight to eight-thirty until twelve, or until you finish your assignment. And we're just looking forward to it, we're gonna have a great time, I'm looking forward to you being there too, with your, no, in the front, in the red shirt. You can do more than work on cars. We already have some city dumpsters out, city has already provided-
Yeah, we, we got some, as well, I'm gonna take my mayor hat and put my corn court hat on. We gonna do this, not just May tenth, we gonna do it some more in the corn court, and I've got them to agree to provide West Memphis.
With the dumpsters, I know I was, I was communicating with Stacy Allen, and he, uh, I didn't know, I, I forgot where so many has, I really forgot. We're gonna have dumpsters as well in various locations, and please don't complain, please don't put just anything in there like paint buckets, uh, construction material, well, they're gonna do it.
That's gonna happen, that's gonna happen. Because the one by Mayfair, the one-
Right, but we're gonna have some in addition to that, because you're taking those up sooner.
Well, they, they're gonna be picked up Monday.
Right, and then we're gonna have these put out.
Do another, because the one by Mayfair, the dumpster is right there, and someone put a couch ten, fifteen feet from the, I'm like, here goes a guy, I can't stand right there with Tori, but you gonna put a load on the back on the other side.
Well, see, that's the mentality we're talking about, people have got to change their mentality.
Al- also, I did get with the, uh, the, uh, the county is gonna, uh, give us inmates to help with this as well, as well as the latest prison, I just talked with them today.
They're gonna help us do-
So, they're gonna help as well, so.
Alright.
So, the next one coming up, we really gonna have it good, and-
Right, and also, if, are you, are you done?
I'm done, I'm done.
And also, if you, if you are a flood victim and you need help getting things out of your home, that's gonna be one of the projects we'll be working on, but you need to call us, um, on my Facebook page, you can reach out to me there, or call City Hall. If you need help cleaning, clearing out your litter and debris from where you had floods and whatever, some people may not have cleaned everything up yet, but we would most certainly love to help you, uh, in that endeavor to get all of that clean. I think that's just about it.
Uh, Councilwoman Hutchison and Councilman Monday, you go first, who?
Would, would you come back up, Jim, for a second, please? I know we've talked about a lot of things, but we got our new trailer, nobody said anything about our new trailer out there. Uh, I know we probably be using it for the truck, the truck this, right?
Food truck? We're gonna, we do have a new stage trailer. I'm hoping to unveil it, uh, next Thursday. I'm working with, uh, local company to get it wrapped, get it decorated.
It's not, it's not all together yet.
Well, it, it's usable, and we probably will use it next Thursday night. But I, I wanted to kinda, uh, open it up and, and show it off next Thursday. We will be using it if it's wrapped or not. Yes, sir, we do have it.
I, I, I can't figure we'd be using it for the food truck then.
Uh, we're gonna help that out, we're gonna move it over there for that too. But the first time will be next Thursday at Blues Off Broadway.
Okay.
And we're working to empty the other, the old one, and donate it to parks. I talked to Russell about that, just about ready, Sean's been helping me out on, uh, making sure it's safe and ready to go.
Okay, alright.
Real, uh, are you done, Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright. Uh, real quickly, I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate my goddaughter that is graduating from the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff on May tenth, so I won't be there, Ms. Muhammad, but I'll be, I'll be helping you, Ms. Money Tines, I'm so very proud of you. My first granddaughter is going to the seventh grade, she's graduating journey, and my little kindergarten is going to the first grade, Kendla, I've never done this before, but this is huge, these, uh, graduations are big. Dr. Wolf, thank you, Ms. Sabri is awesome, I've met with these students, the Prom Promise students, I'm, this is my tenth year. Ms. Muhammad, thank you, I have more students than I have money, um, so thank you, these children are awesome, I met with them Tuesday, I'll be awa- they write an essay, they tell me the importance of a promise, not just Prom Promise. So, thank you for, and, and let Ms. Sabri know that you- Don't be breathing, wonderful. Um, let Ms. Sabri know that we, we support her, and thank you for coming. And congratulations to all the graduates, thank you all, that's it, thank you.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hutchison, that was a spell, he put on you. We had no citizen requests, did council have anything before we get out of here?
I would like to thank everybody for praying for my daughter Candace, many of you know that, um, she's really battling pretty hard right now with cancer. We were in the emergency room a few weeks ago and found out that she had cancer on her brain, and she has gone through a series of radiation. Right now, she's a trooper, she's feeling well, she said, Mom, I drove myself to Walmart this morning, I got really tired, so she had her last round of radiation this past Monday, and we're waiting now, uh, to get the test results to see if that radiation, I mean, it did her really, really... I couldn't do anything but just lay in bed and stare into the ceiling, it was just that bad on me, I can't begin to imagine what she felt like. And, uh, but the Lord has brought her through. Once again, I have a little kitten now, and I said, Candace, I think you have more life than my cat, because you have really, really, really been through some things these past two years, and she never complains, she'll just say, Mom, are you alright? I don't want you to worry, I want you to be alright, and what really hit me was, Saturday, she said, I just want to spend time with my family, and then early Sunday morning, she texts everybody, she said, I want to take everybody out to Cracker Bear for a pancake breakfast, breakfast, and all of that stuff make you kinda wonder what is going on in a person's mind. So, I just want you all to keep us in prayer, keep her in prayer, she's such a beautiful girl, and she never complains, she does not complain, and that's the beautiful thing about it. So, I just, all I can say is just keep us in your prayers.
Will do, thank you so much. Anyone else? Now can I get a motion in second to adjourn?
So move.
All pay, bye? Oppose?